Welcome, everyone. I'd like to start the meeting. I'm going to give the city clerk just one minute to scooch to his seat. No, you don't have to run. That's when you might trip, and then that would be terrible. We don't want that to happen. Anyway, I would like to call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Sinella, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have an invocation this evening. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us peacefully through debate and remind us that we're not only leaders but also servants, and servants above all else, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know what to do is good, right, and true. May we speak when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen.
And we will definitely not have a problem with our sweet little baby in the back talking to us. We'd love that. All right, could we please have a roll call?
Yeah, Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember LeBlang? Deputy Mayor Sinella?
There.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, next up is the Smile Award. So are we coming?
Stay here, I'll go down.
Okay, perfect, all right.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Hopefully, we have some folks here celebrating our recipient for this cycle. If you're not familiar with the Smile Award... Yay, thank you, yes. The Smile Award, it's an acronym for the San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence. It was developed four or five years ago as a way to acknowledge residents, businesses, groups in San Marcos who have a significant and positive impact on our community. And July just happens to be my month because we do it every two months, take holidays off, so July is my month. And looking at the list of prior recipients, and you know, it's that thing where you can't see the trees for the forest, you're looking at people all the time and seeing them all the time and not realizing the significant impact until you start piecing it all together. One of the projects that the Chamber of Commerce, the school district, the community college district, and the university, and the city all worked together on are the Rising Stars Program, where we acknowledge mostly seniors at the high schools who are showing great opportunity and talent for moving forward and betterment. And so we have, of course, Mission Hills, we have San Marcos High School, and we have Twin Oaks. And I listen every single time. I think I've only missed one meeting, and it's interesting to hear the stories. We hear a lot of, you know, this student has a 4.9 GPA, and they're going to... It's fantastic. You know, you sit there and vicariously live through them with all the great things they're doing. And when we get to Twin Oaks, which is in my district, but that's really not the issue here because Mission Hills is as well, but the students that go to Twin Oaks, most of them have started out at one of the two high schools or they're transferring in, and the traditional pathway is just not for them. And one particular session, I stepped in for the mayor, and I talked about that. How about there are no straight lines in life? You have to be willing to zig and zag and accept what comes up and take it as opportunities. So while some people say the students that go to Twin Oaks are looking for a second chance, I look at it as a first opportunity for them. So the way I see it, we have a champion for all of our kids because he sets a great example for all of them, not just his students, and that's Mr. Garth Phillips, the principal. Could you come on up, Garth? I'm going to read the brief proclamation, and then unlike a lot of politicians, I'm going to shut up and let him talk. So it says, "With the Smile Award, the San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence for his selfless work in guiding San Marcos youth and adults toward a successful future. Through his shared mission at Twin Oaks High School, Foothill School, and San Marcos Adult School, his team empowers students to build confidence, discover ambition, prepare for meaningful employment, and inspire students to achieve their dreams." Presented today, July 8, 2025, and it's signed by the council, and I give you Garth Phillips.
Thank you. I personally think Ed lost a bet to see if I'd wear a tie or not, and so hopefully one of you guys won. I just want to say, it truly is not about me, it's about the people that are here for me. I will always say this, and I was texting people today. I don't like public recognition. I do like being recognized, but I really want to recognize the true people that fight the fight every day and love the way they love and cherish our students the way they cherish our students. And I really, and I know it's very trite to say, but I genuinely could not even touch this job without the phenomenal people that I get the opportunity to work with. So thank you very much for this recognition, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well deserved, and I will just tell you, if you do come to a Rising Stars event, that's how Garth speaks. He does not accept the credit, he passes it where it's due, and then uplifts the kids that are moving forward in their life. Very inspirational. Thank you, Garth.
Yep. Let him get a little photo shot in there. Ooh, another Rising Star. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Garth. I already told him I'm stealing you guys, let's go. They're on summer vacation.
No problem, they need their time off. Well, as you all know, we have, one of the most special things about our city is our parks. And parks make life better, we all know that, but we're called San Marcos for a reason, and that's because of all the great parks we have in the city. Forty-four of them, seventeen, I believe it is, that we have built or rebuilt during my time or added major features in my time on the council, which is in nineteen years. So it is a lot of parks, a lot of work, and our Parks and Rec Commission, I know we have a lot of them here today. Could you stand if you're on our Parks and Rec Commission? Yes. We really do appreciate all of your work. And each one of you, I'm trying to see here, am I giving these? Okay, I left my script up there. I'm giving one to each one of them. So I want to, I love to do this. I love to have you think about what your favorite park is and why, and I want you to share that when you come up here. So I'm going to give you just a minute, I'm going to read a little something, so I want you to sit down for a minute and think about what it is, favorite park, and why it's your favorite park. And I will actually start mine after, oh, thank you very much. Anyway, I am going to read this, and I'm going to start out, though, with my park. So my park is Jack's Pond because my kids grew up with Jack's Pond. They started going there when they were four, I'm sorry, yeah, four, and then when my daughter was a baby. So they're 25 and 29 now, so they've been going there a long time. And all of the wonderful memories we had there at the nature center and, you know, fishing at the pond, Jack's Park Pond, just a lot of really fun memories. So anyway, that's my park and that's why. So anyway, the city of San Marcos is known as a vibrant, family-oriented community and known for its open spaces, cultural diversity, and commitment to lifelong learning, where access to parks, trails, and recreational facilities enhances the quality of life for all of us. And our Parks and Rec promotes health and wellness through fitness programs, aquatics, seventy-three miles of trails... I thought that was seventy-two, I've been saying that wrong. And open spaces that support physical, emotional, and mental well-being. Parks and Rec services strengthen the local economy and social fabric by partnering with community organizations and hosting popular events such as the Summer Concert Series, which is ongoing, the Double Peak Challenge, which is coming up, and the holiday celebrations. We just had the Fourth of July celebration this week, or this last week. Anyway, the city's parks, community centers, senior activity center, and forty-two park sites provide inclusive and enriching opportunities for residents of all ages and abilities, reflecting San Marcos's role as the educational hub of North County and also becoming the healthcare hub of North County. The California Park and Recreation Society's Park Make Life Better campaign recognizes the essential role of parks in building vibrant, resilient communities. Therefore, the San Marcos City Council proclaims July 2025 as Parks Make Life Better Month and encourages all of our residents to celebrate and support the vital contributions of the Parks and Rec in shaping the healthy, inclusive, and thriving San Marcos and get out and be active. So I'm going to invite each one of you up, all of our Parks and Rec members. So I want you to tell us your name, how long you've been on the board, and then, again, your favorite park and why. So if, Jay, you get to start out. And I think you might have a little something to say later, but I want you to just talk tonight about this part, about parks and what your favorite one is.
Awesome, all right.
And thank you. And don't forget, how long have you been on there?
Since 2008. I don't do math. My favorite park would be Double Peak Park. It is what I call the crown jewel, so when it comes time for lunch, I work at the University Council of San Marcos. During my lunch breaks, I take the opportunity, especially on a Santa Ana Day, and go up to Double Peak because it's, you can see everywhere. You can see Mexico, you can see the islands, you can see mountains that go forever. It's just a beautiful park.
And we just made a new addition to that park. Do you want to tell us what it is at the top?
The signs?
Yeah.
We've updated the signs. Originally, they used to have signs on the ground because it's so popular, lots of usage. We upgraded the parks, so there's signs that, and the direction of the telescope gives you an idea of what you're looking at, which is pretty awesome.
It's a great upgrade. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to give you this.
Okay.
And you get to stand up here. Tanita? Gosh, that's for you.
Thank you.
How many years? That's your first.
Since 2012, so what is that, thirteen years almost? And I love all our parks. I have memories with my kiddo at all our parks, but I think the favorite everybody knows is Mulberry Park because it is a little tiny hidden gem. And I love seeing all the families come use the splash pad and the open field and everybody with their dogs and their families and just sitting, so I like it because it's a little quiet park, but I do love it.
All right, thanks. And I'm going to have you all line up here because this is going to take too long if I do it this way. Letty, you're next. Sorry, staff's looking at me like, okay, what's going on here? Let me give you that.
Thank you.
You guys get to all come up here and get ready, and then, how long have you been on?
Good evening, Letty Robles, and I've been on the board for, with the commission, I'm sorry, six to seven years.
Six to seven?
Yes.
That's just what it sounded like, I'm sorry.
Between six and seven.
I can hear everybody kind of snickering.
And my favorite park is in Santa Fe Hills because that's where I live, and that's where I took my girls, Quail Valley Park. I love walking or biking down the trail and then seeing the beautiful hills, which are now homes, actually. But that is my favorite park, my best memories, and I've been to so many birthday parties there, so.
I'm Judy Preston-Enzie. I've lived here my whole life, so I had to pick one, and that would be Walnut. And that's because of the horses out there, the horse community, the Heritage Park, and that the Red Barn has settled there, which used to be not too far over my shoulder, used to be sitting out there. And I have been, did I say how long I've been on? Five years. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sasha Smith. I've been on the committee for about ten years now, yeah, ten years. My favorite park is also Jack's Pond. I love to take my children there. Every time I go there, we see something different. We've seen coyotes there, horses, everything. The nature center is a true gem. My son had a birthday party there, first one at the nature center, and so many compliments, everyone loves it, and I especially love the nature center, talking with all the volunteers. We're truly blessed to have so many wonderful volunteers that work at the nature center and volunteer their time to help the little ones discover all the great things that they have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Sensmeyer. I've been on the commission, I think, about nine years. Don't check that, but I think that's about it. My favorite park is Bradley Park. Whenever I go there, there's such a diverse group that's there, and the sports teams are playing. We have that great bike trail, bike track, I should say, up there. That's a very popular destination for North County. And then, how about those amazing fireworks? Oh my gosh, I heard so many compliments and comments on those, so that would be my favorite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angelica Garcia. My favorite park is Mulberry, and it's not for any reason other than it's my way to find home. I moved up here about five years ago. I've been on the commission since early this year, and I get lost real easily. And if I could find Mulberry, I know I'm not too far from Twin Oaks Valley Ranch, and so if I just keep driving straight, I'll get home, so it's a beacon. It's, I know I'm home.
It's your wayfinding side, like our little compass. I love it. All right. Okay, is, do we have any staff that's coming down? Is Andrea here? I didn't really see. Oh, you're hiding. No, 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 come on down. You don't get off the hook that easily. And the woman that's the heart of the parks right now, she's just always everywhere, and she's there at the fireworks. What's your favorite park, Andrea?
Oh, I have to say Woodland Park is my favorite because the jackarandas this time of the year are so amazing. Sometimes I just see parkgoers, kids laying underneath and just daydreaming up at the clouds. It's really nice.
I love it. All right, anyone else is here? I don't know.
I think they're...
Okay, I'm going to give this to you.
Thank you.
Quick picture, and then...
Yeah, we're going to need to scooch in. I'm sure.
Can you get all of us, or do we need to have two of us?
Want me to go behind and say Sasha?
Yeah, of course.
We all saw you.
I know, we're always going to cry.
Our perks, I'm sorry, our Friends of Parks, I didn't realize. They'll be here next year.
I actually did see you ladies. We actually have two more, so let me... Excuse me, come back up. You two, and Catherine. I'm going to give one of these, and you guys aren't getting off the hook. Sorry, I'm going to have to delay us for just one more, two more, actually. One more minute. Okay, favorite park? How long you've been doing this?
Catherine Gray, and I'm part of the Friends of San Marcos Parks and Recs. We're the fundraising arm for Parks and Recs. My favorite park is Woodland Park, ditto on the horse trail, and you get to meet the horses, and lots of sports happen there, soccer games, and so it's a really fun park, so.
Very active.
Yes.
Very active.
Lauren King, also director on the board of Friends of San Marcos. And my favorite park is Simmons Park. It's our neighborhood park. We've had many birthday parties there since we moved to San Marcos in 2004. It's been a very favorite park of ours to watch the sunset and just enjoy family activities.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank everyone for your service. We're going to do one more quick picture. Don't run away. I actually did see you ladies. We actually have two more, so let me... Excuse me, come back up. You two, and Catherine. I'm going to give one of these, and you guys aren't getting off the hook. Sorry, I'm going to have to delay us for just one more, two more, actually. One more minute. Okay, favorite park? How long you've been doing this?
Catherine Gray, and I'm part of the Friends of San Marcos Parks and Recs. We're the fundraising arm for Parks and Recs. My favorite park is Woodland Park, ditto on the horse trail, and you get to meet the horses, and lots of sports happen there, soccer games, and so it's a really fun park, so.
Very active.
Yes.
Lauren King, also director on the board of Friends of San Marcos. And my favorite park is Simmons Park. It's our neighborhood park. We've had many birthday parties there since we moved to San Marcos in 2004. It's been a very favorite park of ours to watch the sunset and just enjoy family activities.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank everyone for your service. We're going to do one more quick picture. Don't run away. Truly, our volunteers are what makes San Marcos so special. We definitely couldn't do without you, so, again, just one more hand for our volunteers. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, do we have any items which any council members wish to pull?
If not, I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
A little second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any no's? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to oral communications. We had comments that were submitted by Universidad Popular, Grace Spivak. I don't think we need to read them unless you would like to read them, Councilmember Nunez. Are you okay?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, no problem. And then, we do have two more speakers. We have Jen, not sure, okay, regarding the effects of a new law in 2026, and then Destiny Mendez. So first up will be Jen. Hi, Jen, welcome.
So do you have the packets in front of you? Yes, please pass them.
Can you pull the mic down to you a bit so we can?
Yes.
It's hard enough with the mask, so I think if it's closer, thank you.
And I will just tell you, if you do come to a Rising Stars event, that's how Garth speaks. He does not accept the credit, he passes it where it's due, and then uplifts the kids that are moving forward in their life. Very inspirational. Thank you, Garth.
Yep.
No problem. They need their time off. Well, as you all know, we have, one of the most special things about our city is our parks. And parks make life better, we all know that, but we're called San Marcos for a reason, and that's because of all the great parks we have in the city. Forty-four of them, seventeen, I believe it is, that we have built or rebuilt during my time or added major features in my time on the council, which is in nineteen years. So it is a lot of parks, a lot of work, and our Parks and Rec Commission, I know we have a lot of them here today. Could you stand if you're on our Parks and Rec Commission? We really do appreciate all of your work. And each one of you, I'm trying to see here, am I giving these? Okay, I left my script up there. I'm giving one to each one of them. So I want to, I love to do this. I love to have you think about what your favorite park is and why, and I want you to share that when you come up here. So I'm going to give you just a minute, I'm going to read a little something, so I want you to sit down for a minute and think about what it is, favorite park, and why it's your favorite park. And I will actually start mine after, oh, thank you very much. Anyway, I am going to read this, and I'm going to start out, though, with my park. So my park is Jack's Pond because my kids grew up with Jack's Pond. They started going there when they were four, I'm sorry, yeah, four, and then when my daughter was a baby. So they're 25 and 29 now, so they've been going there a long time. And all of the wonderful memories we had there at the nature center and, you know, fishing at the pond, Jack's Pond Pond, just a lot of really fun memories. So anyway, that's my park and that's why. So anyway, the city of San Marcos is known as a vibrant, family-oriented community and known for its open spaces, cultural diversity, and commitment to lifelong learning, where access to parks, trails, and recreational facilities enhances the quality of life for all of us. And our Parks and Rec promotes health and wellness through fitness programs, aquatics, seventy-three miles of trails... I thought that was seventy-two, I've been saying that wrong. And open spaces that support physical, emotional, and mental well-being. Parks and Rec services strengthen the local economy and social fabric by partnering with community organizations and hosting popular events such as the Summer Concert Series, which is ongoing, the Double Peak Challenge, which is coming up, and the holiday celebrations. We just had the Fourth of July celebration this week, or this last week. Anyway, the city's parks, community centers, senior activities center, and forty-two park sites provide inclusive and enriching opportunities for residents of all ages and abilities, reflecting San Marcos's role as the educational hub of North County and also becoming the healthcare hub of North County. The California Park and Recreation Society's Park Make Life Better campaign recognizes the essential role of parks in building vibrant, resilient communities. Therefore, the San Marcos City Council proclaims July 2025 as Parks Make Life Better Month and encourages all of our residents to celebrate and support the vital contributions of the Parks and Rec in shaping the healthy, inclusive, and thriving San Marcos and get out and be active. So I'm going to invite each one of you up, all of our Parks and Rec members. So I want you to tell us your name, how long you've been on the board, and then, again, your favorite park and why. So if, Jay, you get to start out. Disparities related to the commercial tobacco use, secondhand smoke exposure, and access to quitting resources still exist across many communities, especially with youth and communities of color. The American Cancer Society found that nearly four million premature lung cancer deaths in the U.S. have been prevented thanks to tobacco control efforts, proving that change is possible when we can take action. The youth who are exposed to this kind of marketing and access are 60% more likely to try smoking. We are still being targeted, and the effects of this are showing up in our classrooms. But that's why I'm here today, to ask for your partnership in protecting San Marcos youth. We are urging the city to help raise awareness about the dangers of flavored tobacco and vaping by supporting prevention education, uplifting youth voices, and creating healthier environments. We're not asking for a policy, we're asking for action, commitment, and leadership to put our health first. Thank you for your time involving the voices of the youth. We may be young, we might be, but we are organized, informed, and ready to lead the change with your support beside us. Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. I just would like to make one comment. You know what would be great if, I don't know if you're, when you're graduating, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
I'm graduating, like, next year. I just, I'm going in my senior year.
Oh, okay. I just, what you might mention to the group is we would love to have someone on our youth commission from your organization because then you can actually have a bigger platform, and then that would be helpful, I think. So those usually come around in, I think, May or April that we announce it, so it'll be next year. It won't be until next year, but if you could let those know in your group that someone should come and apply and be part of the youth commission, that would be great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on, the next order of business is our new business, Resolution 2025-9469, naming of the community park in the Restaurant Road Development. And do we have a staff report on that? I think, just a short one.
Mayor, we do not have a staff report, but we do have some celebrity guests with us this evening that are going to...
Celebrity guests?
Celebrity guests from our Parks and Rec Commission who have public comment and are going to walk us through the process that they went through for the naming.
I love that. So Jay Franklin?
We got all the instructions.
And then Sasha Smith and Letty Robles will be second.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I'm here, my name's Jay Franklin. I'm here to provide an overview of the inclusive and thoughtful process... Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, I'm here, my name's Jay Franklin, I'm here to provide an overview of the inclusive and thoughtful process that the Parks and Recreation Commission used to develop naming recommendations for two new public parks in the city of San Marcos. One located in North City, within the University District specific plan, and another one at Restaurant Row redevelopment site. These efforts followed the City Council policy on the naming of municipal facilities, and prioritize community engagement, geographical contacts, and municipal heritage. I'll start off with, I'm trying to make sure I got it in an order of park naming, okay. North City Community Park Naming Process. No, let me do the other one.
You know what?
Restaurant Row, nope, nope, I got it.
I have a quick question of our, our Mrs. Peak, sorry, I can't, I just can't get my, our counselor out. Can we combine the two items, being that it seems like he's going to be talking about both items? Can I do it eight and nine, and then have our vote separate?
Yes, we've often done that.
Perfect, that's what we're going to do.
For items, yes.
I thought we had, I just wanted to double check. Okay, so we're doing eight and nine, so you can just go in whatever order you'd like, and then we'll have the vote separate.
Awesome, okay, that'll work.
Okay.
So let's do, I know it says Restaurant Row, but I'll start with North City, because it's the...
Oh, they moved it back for you.
Okay.
Okay.
North City.
It's magic.
Still magical. Park details, this new city community park, we built on a 16 and a half acre vacant site in the North City West area, bounded by Discovery Street, Twin Oaks Valley Road, and North City Drive. The park currently has a placeholder name and requires an official name by council resolution. Our community outreach and review process was in April and May of this year, the city invited residents to submit naming suggestions via the city's website, social media, and Parks and Recreation newsletter, and the Springfling Street Fair. We had a couple dozen submissions, were submitted and reviewed by a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the subcommittee composed of Commissioners Marcus Valenzuela, Preston, and Zian Smith. It was formally established on May 21st, at a May 21st meeting. Our evaluation criteria was, the names were considered based on relevance of the topography of park features, clarity and distinctiveness from existing park names, consistency with the city's naming policy emphasizing geographic location or municipal heritage. And then I'll go to Restaurant Row, Restaurant Row Development Park Naming Process. The park is, the park is part of a redevelopment of Restaurant Row's site at 1020 West San Marcos Boulevard, at the northwest corner of West San Marcos Boulevard and Via Vera Cruz. Our community engagement subcommittee formation information, in March and April of 2004, the residents submitted a lot, many dozens of name recommendations via the city's online portal, which was promoting the website, social media, Parks and Rec newsletter, and the city booth at the Springfling Street Fair. A naming subcommittee was formed, consisting of Commissioners Marcus Valenzuela, Robles, and Smith, to evaluate the submissions. Our review process and criteria were, the names of individuals were excluded in compliance with the city policy, the subcommittee focused on names that honor the historic identity of Restaurant Row, reflected and, reflected the design and layout of the development, promoted community familiarity, and place recognition. Both processes followed Resolutions Number 2024-9370, which establishes the official park naming process for municipal facilities. The final decision rests with City Council, based on the commission's vetted and community-informed recommendations. These naming, these naming efforts reflect the values, heritage, and geography of our city. Parks and Recreation Commission is proud to bring forward names that resonate with community identity and historic continuity. I thank you for your time and leadership in shaping this future San Marcos parks, and with me are folks, commissioners, to speak on each of them. It looks like we've got Restaurant Row, so I'll invite a member of that subcommittee up to the podium.
Great, thank you so much.
Hi.
Sasha and Letty.
Well, basically, we came up with some of these names, we received about 50 applications for the park naming process for the Restaurant Row. We wanted to take something that would encompass public opinion, that kind of continued to bring back what the public voted that they would like to, the name to be. We felt like it also brought the location, I mean, everyone is going to continuously call it Restaurant Row, so with keeping that name in the actual name, we thought it would help people know where it is, and also, kind of, help like, the community remember that it's still part of the community, and have the fond memories that they've always had, and the history that has been part of that particular site.
We were concerned with the length of the name of the park. And, but we really wanna keep that Row in there, I know one of them doesn't really have it, but I think for those of us who have lived here and knew about Old California Row, it's nice, and even those new families that are moving into the city, for example. I didn't know Walnut Grove Park was named because it was a walnut grove, and learning the history and how it once was a grove was really nice for me to learn, so I think that it, keeping that original site name within the name of the park will help us preserve history.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you ladies. Okay, so, we'll start with the first park, which is TMP 2304. So when I first moved to San Marcos, it was 1987, so Restaurant Row opened, I think, in 1976, so I hadn't been here that long, and I, it was a place to go in all of North County, and so, I too agree with the preservation of the old, the restaurant, and then personally, the Row as well, for the simple fact that, one of the things that I had said during my comments when we were, when the developer was talking about building this, is you cannot erase Restaurant Row. It is something very near and dear to our community's heart, and you need to preserve, so there is going to be the story of Restaurant Row actually in, contained within the park area, and so for me, I personally want the Old California Row Park for the fact that it really encompasses the most of the name, and it's no longer the actual restaurant, I mean, there are going to be restaurants there, but that's not the crux of what the actual park is, it's going to be the park, and a place for people to congregate, to join their families and their friends, much like they have over all of these years. And so, for that reason, I, that will be my motion for the Old California Row Park. So any further discussion?
I have some questions for the commissioners.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Councilmember, you could just pop in, wait, I didn't, I didn't know you were, needed a question answered, okay.
So thinking through, it sounds like we had great participation from our residents on, in the submissions, and the, so I'm trying to get a sense of, if you can categorize what we received, was it predominantly some sort of variation of the suggestions that we're seeing, or, because one of the things that, for me, when I look at at these, and I completely agree with what's been said in continuing, right, what's been there in that history, I agree with that. But honestly, I'm not sure if the names, as I see them, really capture what's been there, and maybe it's because although I've lived it and spent so many years at Restaurant Row, I'm not really sure exactly what we're connecting, and if that was discussed in the actual history. Because I do agree, like, for instance, that a lot of the naming does capture sort of the history of the location, and the geography, and some of that, but in here, I guess it just really, there's nothing that stands out for me that says this is really what we're capturing, like, for instance, the first one, that says Old California Park, Old California really could mean, I'm not sure what it is that we're capturing there, so maybe it helps me to hear some of the discussions, some of what was considered, and maybe why it's not in front of us today.
Yes, so most of the suggestions, a great deal of the suggestions, did involve Old California, like, a lot of Restaurant Row, Old California Row, basically, Old California and Row were in, like, the majority of the suggestions. We also thought, based on aesthetics, that the developer, as far as we know, that the developer is planning, it's going to be kind of like, almost like rows, too, so we thought that would also encompass it, I think that's how, I think that's how, when we were talking about it, we were basing a little bit on that as well, so it's encompassing the Restaurant Row of the name that everyone calls it, everyone thinks about it, just whenever anyone talks about it, it's always Restaurant Row. Even people who aren't from San Marcos know Restaurant Row, so we wanted to really keep the Row part, and then we thought also, like, again, that they're gonna be doing kind of like, Row-ish style, I believe, housing, or it's kind of like a Row style as well, so we thought that might be work as well. As far as I know, that, we talked about that as well at the time. Does that help? Is it the California, or the Row part that you're...
I think for me, it's, like you said, the Row, because it could really mean, so I'm not sure really what we're trying to tie together, and really bring from...
It is my understanding that the new condo complex and the whole image will maintain its Old California look, am I wrong?
Well, they're incorporating some of the, actually even some of the beams, I know that that was one of the things, you know, bringing, bringing the Old California Restaurant Row, which was the name of the entire area, to, as much as they can, preserve it for, inside the restaurants and whatnot. And then also, again, having, you know, the, the story of Restaurant Row, Old California Restaurant Row. So like, when I think about it, I, like, I know it as Old California Restaurant Row, so for me, it's geographic. It's not only geographic, but it also is a preservation of the history, yeah, the historic part of it. And, you know, all of North County, everyone knows where Old California Restaurant Row was, they know the location of it, so I think for most people inside the city and outside of the city, it's not only just the name of what it was, but it's also the location, because they know it in their head. Because, you know, it was very groundbreaking in 1976, when it was built, it was built by hand, by the way, too. It was something no one had ever seen before, and I remember Bob Eubanks telling me that, I'm sorry, very Eubanks telling me, when my husband said to me, this is where I'm going to build this, this, all these restaurants in one place, she said, "Are you crazy?" So, it was, it was very different, it was nothing like, like it, its type anywhere, so I think, Councilmember, it really is geographic, and then also the preservation of the actual name of what it was, and bringing that forward into the history, and bringing that historical element.
It's coming back to my mind, because we actually met on this subject various months ago, and, yes, preserving its history and the fact that it's maintaining, and they're trying to preserve that history within part of the new project, was also the reason why we thought it would be appropriate. And the suggestions of, of the public.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and then again, the geographical, as you said, like, everyone knows, you know, you say, oh, you know, whatever place, and it's like, oh, is that by Restaurant Row, and again, I feel like that's, you know, Carlsbad, Escondido, everyone, not just San Marcos.
And not, yeah, not always knowing the name of the streets, but knowing the location of Restaurant Row. Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Okay, thank you for that background.
Just a couple of quick questions, Mayor.
Did you want a second motion first?
Well, we can second the motion, then go to discussion.
Yeah, and, and did you, did you have any more comment?
Well, I... Go ahead and second, Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Okay.
So, I like Letty's comment about the brevity. Walnut Grove Park, Mulberry Park. We try to keep it as short as possible, so people can just get it out there. Old would be describing the next word, and it's not Old California, it's Restaurant, did anybody suggest Restaurant Row Park? Because that's what we're, if we're going to identify, like Walnut Grove Park, there's not a Walnut Grove there anymore, but it does describe what was there before. But if we're gonna go brevity with those are the options, I like Old Row Park. Otherwise, when we talk about San Marcos Row Park, I think about people in canoes or skulls, out rowing along, and there's no water out there, at least yet.
I, the, the length of the name of the park is my concern, my, with all the names that we've done, I've always wanted to maintain it as, as easy as possible for anyone, regardless of the language they speak, to know and remember that park's name, and easily pronounce it also. But, and, and yes, Old Row Park is another suggestion that we're putting on the table. I think Old California kind of brings it back to preserving that look of what California Row has been.
Well, I, you know, I might interject just one thing, I believe that it is still called The Row. It's, isn't it still called The Row? So, The Row is actually now the new location geographically, but Old California is the history part of it. So that's why, also, I think the Old California Row Park is, just to offer that up as, as more information, anyway. Do we, do we have any other questions for our commissioners?
Just a, thank you for going through this process and getting all the feedback from our residents, and, and making this a really inclusive naming process for our parks, and how, how neat is it that we're actually having a discussion tonight about two new parks? That's amazing as well, so thank, thanks for everybody who's been involved with that. This, I think this is the easier of the two, there's a little bit more rhyme and reason, you know, with this one. It's easier to connect the dots with its geographic location and the historical aspects of it. I like the, the original motion of Old California Row Park of those options, because I do think it does best capture and identify the location, and kind of keep that, that memory of Restaurant Row, and so, I'm, I'm happy with that, that recommendation.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you. Do, do we want them to, well, they already, did they, yeah, they already talked about both, both items, that's fine, we're good.
Well, no, did we, I think for the second one...
Do we wanna, do we wanna have them do that now, or do we just wanna finish?
Why don't we finish this one, and then go to the next one?
Okay, alright, sounds good, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and he knows, seeing none, alright, motion passes unanimously, alright, come back up on a, a TMP 2305. And yes, what a wonderful thing that we have two parks that we have to name.
We are very excited about two new parks coming online. Okay, so, we were honored to be, again, participating in the naming committee, and thank the community for all the nominations that were received, or suggestions for park names. This one is a little more challenging, it doesn't have that same landmark, but in reviewing the list of potential names for consideration, we evaluated each name. There were a number of names on the list that were for individuals, which is in alignment with our policy around that. Other names proposed were based on geography or nature-linked, so we assessed the names under consideration on a couple of factors, likely utilization of the name, whether it would intuitively be reflective of the location, planned amenities, and shape elevation of the park, we also considered when, looking at potential names and combinations, whether it would be confused with another already-named park in the city, so there were some that were similar to already-named parks, and ultimately felt like these names would reflect key components in the location of the park, and distinguish it from our other 44 parks, seemed to be 46. You wanna go over the names?
Yes, quick question, Deputy Mayor.
Or share anything?
Well, one thing that we determined when we were going through submissions from people, nothing really reflected the area, so, we went through for an hour, different combinations of names, and what we thought would reflect, and the topography, and the location, so, like she was saying, there wouldn't be any confusion with all of the other parks. And so, that's why we came up with the Cascade Hills Park, Hillside Park, Horizon Hills Park, and Skyview Park. Being a new park, the area is new, all it was there was a scrub hill, and now it's being developed quite quickly, I might add, and we thought that the, that these submissions would be thoughtful of the new area.
Okay, any further questions?
Just, just a quick question, I think you bring up a great point, I'm glad that you thought about how, if they might sound familiar to existing parks, did you look beyond San Marcos, so, just like our neighbors in Escondido and Vista and Carlsbad, do they have parks that are, I don't... and Vista and Carlsbad, do they have parks that are, I don't, you know, it would be weird to have like a, the same name of a park in Carlsbad, for example, just because people might get confused?
Have the parks proximal to us in both of those cities? There isn't, uh, these names.
Great, thank you. And you really put a lot of thought into this.
Of course they did.
It's also a chance to honor what's being built into the park. So it'll be, it promises to be a really unique, uh, structure of a park too. So we're really excited about.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, uh, any thoughts on this? Everyone?
I have a thought.
What's that?
I, I like Skyview Park because it's, it is very unique in our community. We have a lot of parks and neighborhoods that have the words hills in it and that, and that makes total sense given the, um, the way our, our community is laid out. Um, but, uh, I, I like Skyview of these options here.
Okay, um, I, I like that too. Um, I, there is a beautiful view, I think, from up there.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's a beautiful location in the city. I'll, I'll second that motion. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and he knows? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. And thank you again for all of, uh, your work. Uh, two new parks, we're very excited about that. So good job, let's give him a hand. Parks make life better, but so do our volunteers, so thank you very much. Okay, um, moving on to oral communications, we have no further oral communications. Uh, reports, uh, we did have a Sandag meeting. Uh, most of the discussion was honestly about the procurement process um, because we had, uh, too many sole sources, uh, sole source, uh, contracts previously. So, uh, we are making sure that we are at each meeting, if there is a sole source, um, and then our procurement that, uh, our executive director has made, he will be reporting out to the board, uh, at each meeting. So that's going to be a change in, uh, what we've done in the, in the past because sometimes we didn't even talk about it until after it was already done. Um, and sometimes it didn't even come up until much, much later. So, uh, that's, uh, something we're going to be doing and we have another meeting coming up, uh, this Friday. Uh, so next up is League of California Cities, council member Musgrove.
We meet next week.
Okay, uh, North County Transit.
Are we dark this month?
We're dark.
We are dark, okay. It's on my calendar, but we're not meeting until August.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, you'd be showing up and no one's there.
And no, no lunch, thank you.
Not good, mm-mm. Um, okay, uh, North County Transit?
Yeah, we had a, a fairly short report for you tonight. Uh, we had, we conducted, um, the, the final reading and the adoption of our fiscal year 26 operating budget and there was no changes from the initial reading, which I presented at the last meeting. And so that's passed and then we, um, set a public hearing, um, to have, uh, public comment on a proposed elimination of the, of a bus route, Breeze Route 323, which is in Vista. And this is the first step, as, as I've mentioned before in, in previous reports, uh, NCTD's leadership and the board are, are reevaluating all the bus routes to make sure that we're getting, um, the kind of the most bang for, um, the taxpayer's buck, um, to ensure that, you know, ridership and, and need and all those different things. And so this is part of that process and this, this particular bus route is also partially served by, uh, the new, um, NCTD plus.
Oh, I was going to ask about that, so.
So that's, that was the thought process, but this is just the public hearing. And so based off of the comments and the feedback that we get from the community, um, that, well, the board will, um, evaluate that and then make a final decision.
So did you receive the data or are you going to be receiving the data of, um, whether the NCTD plus is outperforming the fixed route?
It's, it's not, it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Okay.
It's not, it's black and white and we are.
Well, because it's new too, what I think is probably part of the problem. Which, which I had brought that up, um, actually at the Sandag meeting when we were talking about, um, uh, NCTD plus, that we need to make sure that, uh, we are, you know, comparing that and I know that the data is not out there yet, but we need to be doing it ongoing so that we're actually spending the taxpayer money, uh, as best possible.
No, I, I, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly. And the reason why it's complicated is it's what I think we're learning as, is both of, both NCTD plus in San Marcos and in Vista are really new. Um, they, they, they're, they're serving, we, we might be finding out that they're serving different, um, demographics and different folks. And so we're still trying to get our arms around that data and it really makes sense of it.
Okay, great, all right, uh, next up is.
I do have, I do have a question, deputy mayor. Um, do we know when we expect to have that updated data?
I've requested it, um, but I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have any idea.
Updated for San Marcos or for Vista?
Actually, it'd be great to see both and that becomes available.
I don't have, I don't have a date off the top of my head, but I will get one for you.
That would be great.
See, may, perhaps they could even come and, uh, make a presentation to us.
Ooh, yeah, let's do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, we don't have a North County dispatch. Uh, council member LeBlanc is not here this evening. Um, and she also sends her regrets, uh, to everyone. Uh, Clean Energy Alliance, council member Nunez?
Uh, thank you, mayor. We did have a, a meeting at the end of last month and the big highlight was the approval of our operating budget. And, um, there were really no surprises, um, in terms of what had been contemplated. What I'm being told is that it's very consistent, right, with this year's budget. It's a continuation. There's a lot of concern over the changes that we're seeing at the federal level and considering the, the big beautiful bill that was just signed by, uh, the president. Um, I think there's concern in some of the elimination of the possible resources and the cost impacts that we may have in the future. Um, so at this point, it looks like we should not see any significant impacts in the procurement of, um, energy, but I think we are expecting to see some changes. And so I think it'll be interesting for us to see now that we know what's hopefully in the bill and where the impacts are, um, we should be getting an update on that.
Okay.
Um, but just to go through, um, I did include the proposed budget that ended up getting approved, um, so that's in the materials. And then I also did include a copy of the, of the proposed work plan that's going to be in place for the next fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Any questions? No. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, next up is our city council business visits. Uh, council member Musgrove and I went yesterday. It was a fascinating, um, actual, I had been there once before in 2020 with you, council member Nunez. Uh, Tess was thinking that I was there with, uh, council member Jabar and I said, no, I think she was gone by then. You were actually, she found the picture and it was you and me. It was during COVID, so we had masks on. Um, but it was a fascinating, uh, meeting because they had just started. So they started in 2015 and they are launching their first clinical trial this week, which is pretty cool. And, um, it's SMS biotech. So they, um, it's a small mobile, um, stem cell, um, technology or it's not really technology, it's actual cells that are in, uh, your blood. And they're going to be applying it through a nebulizer in Australia because, um, it's much easier to actually, um, they're following all of the, um, FDA regulations, but it's much easier to get it launched and quicker to get through the red tape there. So, uh, they are going to be doing that. Anyway, it's, uh, to regenerate the tissue, uh, with folks that have COPD is what they're, um, actually going to start with. But they think that, um, the data is going to show that they can use it for other things, not just that. Um, and do you want to take it away, council member? I don't want to say everything.
Sure, if we can go back to the previous slide for just a moment. So on the far left is the founder of the company, uh, his business card only had the initial A. And then next to him is Roger Schechter, who is a medical doctor as opposed to the PhD and the medical doctor, he has worked and works at, uh, Palomar Hospital.
Wound care.
Wound care specialist and he has a very, varied, a varied background and is extremely hopeful that this will work. And now we can go forward, thank you, to the next slide. They have three separate labs that we were given access to. We had to mask up and wear the little booties so we didn't contaminate it. And there's a, an entryways you come in where you could stand, but once you go beyond that tape, you have to be cleaned up. So you're not introducing any foreign matter into that, that cell or that lab rather. Some of the, some of the, uh, the containers where they're doing their work product are well below zero. They do cryogenic freezing and they do, uh, cell replication there in a controlled environment. And the cells they're dealing with are naturally occurring in all of our systems. They're simply pulling them out and using them to regenerate tissue. So the, the initial process in Australia is on COPD patients because they found that lung tissue was extremely receptive of this and they've used it in some experimental processes with animals and they found that it is accepted. When I, when I say accepted, there's always that issue with rejection, but because it's naturally occurring, there is no rejection process and it's not a blood type sensitive, it's a neutral, uh, process, so.
Or, or, um, mammal sensitive to a person or an animal, which is another crazy thing. So these were human cells, um, from two patients that were, um, replicated over and over. And in each vial is one billion cells. It's actually fascinating. I, I mean, my mind was just swirling as they were talking about it. Um, it, I think it, it could, it could actually be completely life-changing, um, for a lot of different things. And one of the things that they, uh, would like to, um, also do is they were noticing in some of the animals, uh, because they were, um, bringing on the COPD, they were actually making it happen. Um, they were also seeing though, um, side effects, well, not a side effect, but sort of a side effect that it was helping with the joints. Um, so, uh, like they were thinking, okay, it might end up being, you know, and this is all going to be, that's why they're starting the, um, uh, the trials, is it might also help at some point in time with, uh, regenerating tissue within your joints. Um, so when you, you know, as we age, we lose, uh, you know, a lot of people have to have knee replacements and that sort of thing. Um, so maybe you might not have to do that if it does indeed work for that. So there's a lot of excitement and a lot of, uh, different applications that they're, uh, they're hoping, uh, will end up happening from this. So it was, it was fascinating. Anyway, so here we are, um, the first time we were there was in 2019, as I mentioned, and then COVID hit and everything and they, they kept going. So they have been, they work seven days a week, all day, every day. Um, I, I'm not sure. And they have billions and billions and billions, trillions of, uh, cells. How many did they say, like 200?
3.2 trillion.
Yeah.
3.2 trillion onsite here, but they also have off, off-site storage. And so they need to come in every single day because as the replication occurs, they need to be isolated out and put into a cryogenic state.
It's, it's crazy and it was really, and the fact that they only have two daughters was really crazy and that it could, it could actually work on an animal from a human. That just blew my mind, anyway.
It's not sensitive, it's not sensitive to the age of the recipient either.
No, and it's kind of like an, I, I don't know how to explain it, but I, I did use this word. They kind of giggled at me. Um, infant, um, sort of cells, they're kind of like infant cells. So they're not specific to an animal or a person, just a mammal. Um, it just would work and it, it was fascinating, anyway.
So the, the, the test in Australia, are they going to use a nebulizer? So inhaling for COPD to get direct access to the lungs? But they also found that when they tested, um, animals that were injured, like ligament damage, a direct injection into the ligament, they saw marked improvements within 10 days. It's just fascinating.
Yeah, and they do, um, they, they're actually only doing so far, um, three treatments. One on the first day, then four days later and then four days later. And what?
One, four, eight.
Yeah, one, four and eight. And then they're saying that you see a huge improvement by, sometimes right away, but a huge improvement by day 10. So I mean, it's like super fast, like it's, it's crazy. Anyway, um, I, I'm really excited to see, I, I want to keep in, uh, up on this one. I think it would be very interesting to go back in a year and see where they're at and what has happened. Anyway, um, okay, that's it. Um, and then after that, we, what? Wait, what?
Question?
Uh, well, we actually had, we, we don't really, that's, that's not really, um, you could ask us a question after because that's not really, um, how it works, sorry. Um, we have to follow the rules and the laws for, uh, that sort of thing. I see your attorney looking at us. Anyway, okay, uh, with that, uh, do we have any council commentary? Fourth of July, the fireworks, if you missed them, at Bradley Park, they were great. I thought they were actually one of our best, um, fireworks displays we've had. So, uh, anyway, any further comments? No? Okay, with that, that's meetings adjourned.